Item number one is meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, such as 21, 8, 3, and 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 (2007), to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street, and Igor Lebasky et al. versus the Town of Sherburne, number 21, miscellaneous P.S. 000193 (H.P.S.). Item number two is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town, and the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of 5-star Building 4 versus the Town of Sherburne, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, 8, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449, Mass 444 (2007), Sherburne Library.
Excellent. Are there any revisions to the executive session agenda? Hearing none, I do declare that an executive session is required to discuss these two items, so I would move that we move to executive session now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote, Eric.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you. So we'll move to executive session. I'm gonna... We're now gonna start the open session portion of the select board meeting of July 27. And I'd like to start 7:30 PM, and I'd like to start with the Assistant Town Administrator reading the open agenda, please.
Good evening. So after I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. Tonight, we do have a public comment from Chairman Jeff Waldron. Items may be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number 1 in 1A is to review of special town meeting timeline and draft list of warrant articles. And the select board can possibly consider dates to open and close the warrant for fall town meeting on October 17, 2023. Item number 2 is Coolidge Street Homes 40B. Set a date to have comments from boards and committees back to the select board review, because comments need to be back to mass housing honor before August 28, 2023. Item number 3 is the consideration of a draft IMA, Social Work Services Agreement. Chief Thomas Galvin will be here to speak on that. Item number 4 is consideration to rescind the Massachusetts Inter-Agency Mutual Aid Agreement. Chief Thompson, Chief Galvin will be here for that. Item number 5 is the community assessment update and new community guide. Sue Calaher, the COA Director, will be here to speak on that. Item number 6 is consideration of additional APRA funds for irrigation wells at Laurel Fields. Dave Goldberg and Jeremy Masset will talk on that. Item number 7 is consideration of a letter to the Regional School Administration Building regarding the 2023 intermunicipal agreement. Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer, will be here for that. Item number 8 is a list of appointments for the board to consider. The Agricultural Commission, Mark Williams, for a term to expire June 15, 2026, and that's a reappointment. Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee, Cornelia Reddy Roberts, for a term to expire June 15, 2026. And I'm happy to say that she's a brand-new appointment. Zoning Board of Appeals, Zach McBride, for a term to expire on June 15, 2026. He is replacing Ron Stafford, who has resigned, so he'll be going from an associate to a full voting member. Todd Labey for a term to expire June 15, 2026, and he'll come on board as an associate member, and that's another new appointment. The election workers, a list will be presented to the select board by Town Clerk Jackie Morris. The consent agenda is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of July 13, 2023. Our next scheduled meeting dates are for August 10 and August 24, I'm sorry. And then consideration of routine visits, which is select board reports and town administrator reports.
Just one correction. I don't know if you saw what Chief Galvin added. There's a typo. It's not consideration to rescind the agreement.
It's to revoke.
No, to re-sign it, to re-sign it.
To re-sign.
Oh, that sounded fine. They've made some revisions to it, apparently mutually made some revisions, and so I think it's to re-sign it, but the amendments, I think, are still being made. When we get to... Tom can straighten this out, but I think the wording might be off there.
Okay.
We come... So we should actually maybe officially amend the agenda to say re-sign. I think it's different enough that we should do that officially.
Is that... Where's Tom? Is that correct? The word "re-sign" is the correct word, Tom?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it is the re-sign.
Okay, so that... So...
I think it's re-dash sign, too. Otherwise, it's resign.
Respect to the agenda then, Eric.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to actually replace the word "rescind" and put in "re-sign." I think it's re-dash sign. Otherwise, it's resign.
And accept the rest of the agenda.
Correct.
Other than that revision. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, Eric.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well. So I'm gonna start the meeting, though, on a somber note with my public announcement, which is, I think people have read about it. Tragic loss of life of a high school student, Sadie Morrow, last Friday night in a boating accident. So I'd like to just have a moment of silence right now and just respectfully think about Sadie. Okay. And I helped with the audio visual. They had a vigil for her last Sunday night at 6:30 PM that I helped out with. But there's a full memorial service that's gonna be held tomorrow at 10:00 AM at Unitarian Church, if anyone's interested and available tomorrow morning. So I think with no other adjustments to the agenda, then we'll go on to agenda item number 1, which is the town meeting timeline.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll give a summary.
Hang on one second. Eric, you'll have to... You're our host, so I can't put you in the waiting room. You'll have to just...
Just text me and then walk away. Text me. I'll walk away.
Okay. Go ahead, Stephen. Were you gonna add something?
Me? No. I didn't have my hand raised, did I?
So Jeremy, do you want to walk us through? We have the agenda, proposed agenda, beginning with the warrant closing. We have the warrant opening, warrant closing, and the advisory public hearing, I think, for September 13th is...
Yeah, that's right. One of your last meetings, you did decide that you would like to hold a special town meeting this fall, setting that date for October 17, and we've gone ahead and reserved space at Lincoln Commons to accommodate for that. We've since gone back. Jeannie and Jackie Morris, the town clerk, have gone through, and in your agenda packet is a, you know, a draft schedule of events leading up to that special town meeting of October 17. Dan Sickel, Chair of Advisory, has set a hearing date. That's included in here. The Advisory Committee hearing date is included. That's proposed for September 27 at 7:00 PM. And then, you know, some of the other dates included here are just straight out of, you know, what we need to do for public notice of a town meeting. But you do need to decide as a board, you know, when you would like to formally open and close the warrant, and then when you'd like to sign the warrant, and if the board, if you would want to consider any additional items beyond those required for the North Sherburne Water District and a revision to the preliminary development plan for Metta Brook Commons. Those two are the items that you... Really, the purpose of the special time meeting?
Yep.
In your agenda item packet, there's six other potential items that just I've solicited from town staff that could be included. However, none of those six are particularly time-sensitive, so they could be deferred to the annual time meeting if that's the board's desire. So that's a decision for the board to make tonight.
We probably should do that, don't you think, two weeks from tonight? We don't have the material on all the other ones now, so I don't think we can discuss it tonight, but I think we should probably do that at our next meeting. Go ahead, Paul.
So having been to 1,252 town meetings.
Wow.
Career. It's what I do for a living, start at town meetings. My rule of thumb is to try and close the warrant 60 days before the town meeting. In part, because I'm a town council, there's times that the lawyer needs to work on the warrant and then work on the motions. Then you have to have hearings, planning board sometimes, advisory always. 60 days is a comfortable time. If you apply that in this case, then you're looking at closing the warrant on August 17, which means that we ought to be opening the warrant tonight and keep it open until the 17th.
Yeah, and I think coincidentally, when's our next meeting? Is this 10th? Is that right?
You have a meeting scheduled, or two meetings scheduled for August currently, August 10 and August 24.
I think we probably should do it the 24th. I know that's a week longer than your... Shorter than your 60 days, but I think we're gonna need to work on the content a little bit, too, to close the warrant. In other words, the warrant language has to be closed also, not just the items included in the warrant. Do the articles have to be finalized content-wise?
No, the meeting, probably your September 7 meeting, if you close the warrant on the 24th, your September 7 meeting, you'd probably want to vote the actual warrant, the warrant language.
Yeah.
What that, that closing the warrant is really about is citizen petitions.
Yes.
But we have the articles that's on this list, but when you call a town meeting and you open the warrant, anybody can come up with any warrant at all. And I've seen in my other towns, people come up with some some articles, you know, to regulate books in the library or to weigh in on educational programs in the schools. All these things are potential arts, so you can't control that. If anybody gets 10 signatures, they can produce it. So we're talking about what is the deadline for that? And if you have it, it's August 17, then that part is behind us, and then we know what we're dealing with. We can, at that point, do our articles.
Okay. You've convinced me, but you want it to coincide with one of our meeting nights, or do you don't care about that? You just want it to be?
It doesn't have to.
All right, then, then why don't we just do the 60 days, and we'll do August 17. It is when we'll vote to close the warrant.
The warrant will automatically close if you so vote it tonight.
We vote tonight to close it on, and we meet once again, so we meet on the 10th if we wanted to add any, anything to it, but you want to vote tonight to close it on the 17th, Paul? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes. Putting the time of 5:00 PM that day is what we want.
Yes. You want to make that motion, please, Paul?
Yes, I would suggest we open the warrant tonight, tonight, and close it at 5:00 PM on August 17.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, is there any select board comment? Okay, hearing none. Bob Murchison had his hand up. Do you want to add something to this, Bob?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. I just want to make the comment that the concept of opening and closing the warrant quickly in order to preclude citizens from participating in the town meeting democratic process, I object to that concept. I mean, you know, the dates, whatever you guys want to do on the dates is fine, but to do it because you're trying to stop public participation feels very, very bad to me. The whole point of town meeting is so that everyone can come and bring their ideas if they want to, and Paul's comments that, you know, we want to close it early so as not to allow people to do that, I think is kind of anti-democratic. Thank you.
That was not my intent. If I said that, I misspoke. The point is, we need to know what we're dealing with for this town meeting, and how many articles, and so on, and what we're talking about by opening and closing the warrant applies to citizen articles.
But I had something, Jeff.
Yes, yes. I was just waiting to see if Paul was finished. Go ahead.
Are you finished, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, I think he is.
Yeah, it's actually just the opposite is true. Once we close the warrant, we have the warrant article drafts in front of us. They're still, they're still only drafts. They still can be modified up until, not sure when the last time is. It's the advisory committee hearing or afterwards. Remind me, but...
Before.
Prior to that, yeah. Probably your September 7 meeting, you'd want to vote the warrant language.
Right. So the sooner we get it open, the better, and the sooner we close it, the better we know which articles we're going to be dealing with at town meeting. It doesn't mean that we're shutting down public comment at all, on the contrary.
No, I know, but it did sound, you know, the, I think Paul just, the way he characterized it, I think Bob made a good point. You know, we really welcome the town's input, and if there are articles, many people didn't know that we were gonna have a special town meeting, so my only concern with doing it too early is that people may not realize till after Labor Day that we're even having a fall town meeting. So I think Bob's point is well-taken to make people aware, although we rarely have a fall town meeting, so it's unusual to have any articles on the fall, so... But I think it's a good point, so... So we're choosing, if I understood your motion, to close the warrant on August 17. Is that correct, Paul?
Yes, but to open it now.
Okay.
So that by opening it, we're inviting articles to be submitted, and we will be receiving them for this town meeting up to and including August 17. It doesn't preclude anybody from having an article for the annual town meeting.
No, I know.
Happens every year.
Yeah, no, it's all about communication.
We're not trying to limit. We're trying to be organized.
Yeah. And so I guess what I say, Jeremy and Jeannie, maybe we could also just put a note on the website, just saying that the warrant is open, and if people have anything they'd like to have included, that would be another way of letting the citizens know that that's going on.
Will do, and we'll provide the contact information.
24 people here tonight, including probably eight to 10 of us being on the town employee side of the fence, so...
We'll get the word out.
That, that sounds good. All right, so do we have a second for Paul's motion?
A second.
Okay, Stephen.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well, and Eric abstained. Okay. Then the next, does anyone else have anything under the process that we talked about, the town meeting timeline? Anything's... Go ahead, Marion.
Yes, I think the September 13 date for posting the notice of an advisory committee hearing, that has to be September 13, two weeks before the advisory committee hearing, but I would think that we could mail the notice of advisory committee hearing on the same day that it's posted. I wouldn't wait a week before mailing the notice.
Well, I'm not sure if Jackie or Jeannie, Jeannie's got her hand up. It takes time to prepare the notice, I think, but go ahead.
It's not the notice. For a special town meeting, it has to be in the households five days prior to the advisory hearing. So it's gonna be there. I'm gonna mail it on the 18th, which means it'll get in on the 19th. So it'll, it'll be there in plenty of time for the 27th. That's for the advisory hearing, and then the notice, the advisory report will also go out. So we'll have enough time to get everybody notified before the hearing.
Somebody needs to mute themselves. I don't know who it is. Does that answer your question, Marion?
I mean, I, Marion, I can send it out prior to the 18th. That's, that's not a big, that's not a problem at all.
If it's not a problem, why not send it out prior? Because, you know, people need time to look into the stuff they need to look at before the hearing. I mean, there's no reason not to get the word out to the town.
I think we're gonna have to draft the language, though, see? So the only thing, by closing the warrant on August 17, that just, that doesn't mean that the language is finalized.
Marion, are you talking about the advisory committee report or the notice of the advisory committee hearing?
The notice of the hearing. That's all I'm talking about.
Okay, that does not include any of the articles. It just states that everything is posted on the website.
That's right. So I think that should go out at the same time that the material is, that the announcement of the hearing is posted on the website.
Okay, I can do that. That's fine.
All right. Did you have anything else, Jeannie, or you're set?
I'm good. Sorry.
I'll put your hand down, then.
I just did.
Okay, great.
So one other comment on the timeline?
Yes.
So we have the right to set the quorum for the meeting. Now, we did that for the annual town meeting, and I think we set it at 50, maybe?
I believe that's correct. We were as low as 20, I think, in the middle of COVID, but we went up to 50, I think.
So we could put into this timeline a discussion of what quorum would be necessary.
Yeah.
I mean, in all due respect to the importance of these articles, that my sense of many voters in the town, they're not gonna start canceling plans and Columbus Day weekend and all this stuff to go to a town meeting on a North Sherburne Water District. And so we may have a problem with getting a quorum.
Well, let's not discuss it tonight. Let's just plan on having that be, when we are working on the articles, we can also set the decide what we think makes sense for the quorum.
Well, now, there's a process. You have to have given notice. There's a whole statutory process. I'm just saying, for purposes of the timeline, if you're going to have such a discussion, it ought to be put into the timeline somewhere.
Okay, and how much time in advance does it need to be done? Can we do it? We meet again on August 10, I think, is our next meeting. Could we do it on the August 10?
I think Jackie would have an answer to that.
Um. Hi, let's see. I'm gonna have to, off the top of my head, I think it's, it's either 10 days or 20 days. I have to give notice to the Attorney General's Office, and I apologize. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can I can make sure that Jeremy and Diane are aware, so that we can make sure you guys are voting, plus Mary Wolf needs to be involved. She has to approve, she has to agree to it.
So in August, we meet the 10th, I believe, and the 24th, so we could do it at one of those two meetings, whatever you recommend.
I would suggest you do it in September.
Okay.
First of all, I think you ought to let the warrant close, so you know what you're dealing with. If it's a 30 article town meeting, you might have one sense of what quorum you need.
Yeah.
A two article town meeting, you may have a different sense of what quorum.
Yep, yep.
I propose that we put that on the agenda for September 7.
Okay, that's fine. Sounds good.
Makes sense.
Anything else you have, Paul, or Marion, or Stephen?
Jackie has her physical hand up.
Oh, I didn't see your physical. Hello there.
I was like, where's my hand? Yeah, actually, I, seven days before the vote, I also have to post that you guys are voting to lower the quorum. So if you're going to vote on September 7, and I would have to make sure that that I advertise that, I just have to post it on the website, and...
Just do it before Memorial Day weekend, then, I guess.
Okay, okay, Derek. So we're definitely gonna vote on the 7th then for the quorum.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else on Article 1 in 1A? Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to Cooley Street Homes 40B. We toured the project. Was it just last Friday or the Friday before? I can, it's Friday before, I guess. And we got an extension for mass housing that we have to have the full select board comments by August 28 to mass housing. So I've been formally been telling the boards that I've talked to that they need to get us their information in the middle of the month. We meet on the 10th of of August, so that we can then incorporate all the input from the various boards. Some of them won't have met by that time, so they may give us their draft information, and then subsequently have it in their next public meeting, in which they'll maybe make some revisions to it, but I told them we needed sooner rather than later to assemble the integrated letter to mass housing, and we meet the next time, as I've said, at the 24th of August, which then gives us a few days before the 28th to submit our final draft, and Marion and I have sort of, I don't have my yellow hand up, but we volunteered to help draft it, so you want to characterize it better than I did, Marion?
My hand was not volunteering, although I will do. You know, I will. I looked at the various committees that we need to hear from, that we need to have letters from, and they all meet before the 20th, not long before the 20th. Concom the 17th, Planning Board the 15th, Public Safety the 16th, oh, Board of Health the 16th. So I think it'll work.
Yep, I think it will, too, but we have to get word out to them. So maybe Jeremy and Diane, can, can you make an effort to just draft a letter or an email to all the various boards and committees that normally provide input, so that we
can do.
Get their input from them. Anything else on agenda item number 2? All right, so we're now gonna move on to the draft IMA, which is the Hollis and Jail Divergent Plan. Tom's gonna explain that to us.
Yes, so I don't know if you remember, but a couple of months ago, I talked to you about a couple of grants that we were applying for a part of our addressing mental health issues within the area. One of them was our jail diversion clinician and our co-response program. So since 2015, Hollis and Hawkington and Sherburne have shared a co-response clinician. That's been through a grant that was done by the Town of Holliston, but the services in the past have been provided by advocates. And we broke our contract with advocates several months ago, because they weren't able, are no longer able to provide a clinician, and it became apparent that it was gonna be very difficult. So what was done this year is the grant was redrafted, where the new clinician will actually be an employee of the Town of Holliston. So what this IMA does is this basically takes what was in our contract with, for scope of... So what this IMA does is this basically takes what was in our contract with, for scope of services with advocates, you know, memorializes it in IMA on how it's gonna be handled for the shared services of our, our co-response program. So this was worked on by, by the three police chiefs and three town administrators and worked out by all three community town councils.
Yeah, this is a great plan. I think we're gonna get much better service too, having it in-house and there'll be, you won't have as much turnover and personnel and things.
Absolutely. It'd be very much, much more competitive with salary. That was, that was our real problem is thirty percent of our grants in the past is going just to overhead for advocates.
Yep, yeah, I think that's great. All right, so do we need to vote to approve the, to give you the authorization and to approve this? What do we need to do, Jeremy? Guide me here.
Yeah, we would ask that you vote to approve the IMA and you, you would sign the IMA. But the IMA also references an appendix that has the, the scope, which is, is attached. But there would, there would be opportunity for the town administrators to, to tweak the scope when needed. That's why it's an attachment. But we would ask that you endorse, vote and endorse the, the IMA.
Okay, we have two comments. Marion had her hand up first.
I just have a quick question. The expenses will be paid by each town contributing one-third, which makes a lot of sense. But I noticed that Holliston is gonna actually be doing more work managing the financial and human resources side of it and doing the budget and preparing a budget and all that. Will Holliston get paid separately out of the grant apart from that three-way split?
So all of, actually, all of the expenses are anticipated to be paid from the grant and Holliston would be the, the gatekeeper of the grant. So Sherburne, all, Hopkinton receive benefits from this IMA, but we don't anticipate any actual expenses to be incurred by, by the town.
Not sure that was your question, though, was it, Marion? You're just wondering if Holliston's, we're doing them a disservice here a little bit.
No, the, the administrative costs will be covered by the grand four halls and what they
Separately, okay. I'm, I'm sure that's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul?
So I, I had three comments. The, the first is, this is a good program to have social workers assisting the police department. A lot of de-escalation can happen with a good social worker dealing with somebody who's dealing with other issues that are, aren't strictly law enforcement issues. And so it's a program that benefits public safety, benefits the police department, benefits the community. So I, I support it completely. I'm gonna vote in favor of this. But my, my second point is that if I were Sherburne's Town Council, I, this would be some revisions that I would make to this. I'm particularly concerned about live, who is really liable if the person who's doing providing these services does something wrong. And it's not clear. There's, there's some, some language changes I would suggest. So I'm gonna vote yes, but would urge you to consult with town council. Make sure that it's clear which community is going to be liable, particularly when Sherburne has, the agreement provides for Sherburne to have its own later on. And when we have that, this, do we have all the liability or is that liability shared? So there. You know, when you're speaking to a lawyer, lawyers look at words. And but it's good. And I'm gonna vote yes.
No, we wanted, I think we want the protection. I'm really, I actually really glad you brought that up, so. I guess we'll just
So for the, the counts, town councils of the three communities have not, have not caught that, but, so thank you, Paul. But we will, we'll pass that on and inquire about that, just to make sure it's clear.
Should we ask Patrini, our town council, to, to look at independently, you think?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah, the town councils of all three member communities individually reviewed.
Now we're paying four times for that opinion, I guess. Including the generous salary that Paul earns for being a select board member. I, I guess it's
It's worth, certainly worth an inquiry and we will.
To Patrini, I think, just so that we don't, you know, that he's focused on us and, you know, it's worth just dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I think. But I'm, I'm very glad you brought that up. So Paul, with that said, do you wanna make the motion, though, at the same time?
Sure. Move approval. Move to authorize the chief to sign.
Okay, to sign the IMA for Social Service Agreement. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Hi.
I might as well. Sounds great. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. And you're up on the next one. One confusion thing I had, additionally to the wording issue, it sounded like the amendments aren't completely made yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's actually no, this is just to reaffirm our, our our participation in this agreement. So what, what, really, this comes out of accreditation. And part of the accreditation process is to really view the mutual aid agreements you're a part of. And there's several Middlesex County communities that are party to this agreement that are actively going through the accreditation process. So we, we thought as a body, as a group of Middlesex chiefs, that it would be important to, to update this to reflect current police chiefs, current town administrators. Because this was signed by the town back in twenty fourteen. So this is just to update this to our current, current administration and stay, stay a party to the agreement.
So do you think we need to vote to, to authorize you to re-sign it? Is that how you
Correct, yeah, this would be vote and re-sign.
So do you wanna make that motion too, Paul, please?
Yes, to authorize the chief to resign.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Uh, we, we didn't get a second yet, so I'll, I'll second that first.
Second it, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Oh.
Hi.
I might as well. And going back on item three, Tom, we'll, I don't know if we all need to sign it. Can just the select board chair sign it? You think the IMA for the social? You can decide, but we would have to wait to sign it till we get the town council input.
Okay, Jeremy and I'll look at the, the sign up sheet.
However you decide it, either I'll just come sign it or we'll, I'll sign it.
Excellent, thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay, thank you very much. They're both programs. So Sue, this is terrific. I, I love what you've done. So you wanna update everyone that's in our packet?
Yep, so we had gotten the results of the community assessment from UMass and immediately our board went to work and developed, from December to February, worked on developing a plan for the COA. And one of the things that had come up in the community's assessment was the lack of communication or people not knowing things in Sherburne. So we had received a grant and we put together a community resource directory, which is, I don't know if you can see it, but we, you have it in your packet and we have eighteen hundred copies. And what we're gonna be doing is mailing them out to new residents or people that come into the COA office. There'll be a welcome packet with what the COA does. And if you look through the directory, it's not geared only for older adults. It's geared for everybody in the community. And I had been speaking with a new resident of Abbey Road the other day and he said, you know, he had gotten a white card with phone numbers, but he didn't know anything else. So I dropped a directory off to him and he was thrilled with it and we're getting very good response. I'm working with the library to figure out how we can get him in their welcome packets. So that was one of the major things we did. We also did some targeted mailing to different groups to let people know what the COA does. We refreshed our website. We also, our postcards were mailed to over eight hundred people. So we had sixty to sixty-five and seventy and over and the postcards were upbeat and friendly and trying to encourage people that, or tell people it's not that bad getting, being older. We had increased our weekly email blast. We now have five hundred and eight subscribers. So when I started it, we had three. And our Facebook, we have been working diligently on getting out news through that and we went from three to seventy-five people. We also utilize Nextdoor and the Patch and other, and Twitter. Then we've been featuring, one of the recommendations was to let people know who's who in town hall. So we started with Liz Anderson in one link and then we did Amy Davidson in another. And hopefully this new link will be doing Jean Greco from the Board of Health. We also organized our first community resource grant, which was also recommended, a resource fair, which was also recommended by the, in the community assessment. We implemented the dial-a-ride. We've had twenty-six applications of sixty-five and over and we had five applications of residents that are disabled and we've since January have done a hundred and thirty-seven rides. And through our, our transportation grant through JFK, we've already provided two hundred and fifteen residents with rides. We've increased our lifetime learning. We've been proactive in developing a partnership with the police and fire and holding community engagement meetings. Increased working with the library, intergenerational programs. And then also had to, we're trying to do a few more evening programs to reach the younger crowd, sixty and over. So all in all, over the last fiscal year, we've collected twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars through grants. And again, the resource directory was totally funded through a brilliant program. It will be online and updated regularly. And hopefully people will see the benefit in receiving that and having that information. So the board wanted me to let you know what our progress was. I did also attach the plan and color-coded it red, green and yellow. So red is stuff that we still need to accomplish. Yellow is ongoing and the green is what we've done so far. So I just wanted you to know that your money was not wasted in the community assessment brand and it's been a really good tool for us to go forward.
No, it's terrific what, what you've accomplished so far. And I'm glad you're letting us know, but letting, there's not a lot of people on the call tonight, but letting the community know. Now, I didn't understand exactly, so the, the, will there be a PDF version on the town website of the guide also?
Yes, there'll be a PDF version on my website and the town.
Okay, that's perfect, because I think that'll get it out there. But I'm gonna come get my hard copy. I'm, I killed colored trees, is what I So Paul had his hand up first.
Yes, I, I wanted to say I absolutely love what you're doing. First of all, the community guide, when I read it, it was very impressive. It was thorough, informative. It is exactly what needed to be done. It made me smile when I, when I read that. And I encourage all of our listeners to obtain this resource and use it. But I also wanted to particularly compliment you on the communications that are going on. I mean, I've been getting the link. I've been getting some emails. I've been getting all kinds of information about fun and exciting things that you're putting together and, and doing. It's like things are really happening at the council and age. It's just
They are.
It's, 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 it's fun to see. It's fun to see that, that you're, you're so full of enthusiasm and, and doing so many things, so many different directions.
Thank you.
Exactly what we needed to do and I think exactly what the community assessment was saying. That's what people wanted. So I, I, I think you're addressing a need and that you're, you're connecting and you're communicating. So I envision that as people see that they're getting what they've asked for, this is really gonna take off.
Thank you. Well, I have a good staff, so we all work well together and all come up with different ideas. It's just trying to fit everything in, so. But thank you for the
It's a great team and we added resources. I'm very glad that the town committed to add the resources that you need, so I think
Thank you, yeah.
We're seeing the benefit of that. Marion.
Oh, yeah, I would second everything that was said by Paul and others. This is really a big step forward, much needed by the town. I have one small question to you, Sue. I, looking through it, I thought it was great. Yeah, I, I'm with my critical eye. I, I noticed a few things that I thought were missing in terms of resources or contacts. And so I wonder what, what's the mechanism for people to suggest revisions for the next
Yeah, you can just email me and we'll compile them and then include them in the next version. Or we could also put it, you know, an added page in there as an insert.
Great, that's terrific. I think it's really, I'm sure you'll get some from, from, you know, members of the senior community that the only that frustrates me, I will tell you, is that my, my mother's living in Princeton. She's ninety-nine and my mother lives in Portland, Oregon. She's eighty-seven and neither place has a, even a hundredth of what Sherburne has in terms of services. So I always say, why can't they have that in Princeton, Jersey? So anyway, we're very, very fortunate. I know it's not luck. It's all a lot of blood, sweat and tears to cause it to happen, so, and persistence.
Thank you.
There's a lot of things that, services that people don't realize you provide. So what we might do is, you know, during the year, we can update it some things that, and there's a lot of counseling and things that aren't quite as visible that a lot of time and help a lot of at-risk people in town that were probably not aware of, or at risk. So anyway, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right. You're up, Mr. Goldberg, wherever you are. I see you.
There's a light behind my head, so sorry about that.
There's two, actually.
Yeah, you can kinda make me out. Yeah, so just to give the board an update, last time we were in front of you talking about irrigation at Laurel, we voted on a hundred thousand, or you voted on a hundred thousand dollars to get the project started over Laurel. Since then, we've spent twenty-five thousand of it, twenty-five thousand nine, I believe, to be exact. So that's gone into the first step, which was fractured trace analysis, which basically tries to find the, the best spots to drill over there. So we had the fracture trace analysis done. We identified two spots that we felt were good candidates for drilling. And we put together a, the consultant put together a, an outline of what he felt we needed in order to move forward, like the, the well, the specifications of the well and so forth. We're at the point where we're ready to move forward with the, with the drilling. We've identified, Jeremy's been working, been working with Jeremy and Sean. We've identified a contractor who will, who will essentially carry out and oversee the, the drilling. We, the initial funds that we had allocated, the hundred thousand isn't, doesn't look like it's, isn't gonna cover the next phase, which is the drilling. So the request was to ask the select board to vote for additional funds that were earmarked for the project, but just not released at the last meeting. So we need another sixty thousand dollars, I believe, in order to, in order to continue on to the drilling phase. I should note that that is a not-to-exceed number with the contractor, so there's a, there's a chance we might not have to go as deep with the wells. There's a chance we may get away with a single well versus two wells, but we've, the money that, that we're allocating for this is to go to the full depth for two wells. So that would be the maximum we would exceed in this phase of the project.
I have that. Go ahead, Eric. I, I have the ARPA spreadsheet, but we'll, we'll step siefring here in a minute, too.
In your, in your packet, the selectments packet and the, the public packet is a summary of the ARPA funding? It's good. In your packet, the selectments packet and the, the public packet is a summary of the ARPA funding. So that should be available for all.
I can, I can share my screen if you want. I have it open, too, if you want.
I have a couple of questions about the proposal, if I could.
Sure.
The test wells, the test, the test pumping rates, will they be converted to the permanent wells, or do you have to re-drill to make the permanent wells after these test wells?
If they prove out, Eric, they'd be converted to the permanent wells.
They can do that. Okay. I know something drinking water supply, you can't do that, because you have to like double the diameter or something like that. All right.
Testing requirements, so the, the contractor, Geo, well, it's actually, they have a hydrogeologist on staff, so it's really professional services that we're, we're, you know, proving out the, the capacity and quality of the, the potential water for irrigation.
Yes, actually, oh, sorry, go ahead.
They've coordinated with the Board of Health on the requirements for testing. The Board of Health does not have separate approval requirements for irrigation wells as opposed to drinking water wells. So what's in this proposal, what's in the proposal on what the, the, the investigation would entail would be the same. That would be done for a potable water supply. And, and Board of Health would be involved through that, including the four-hour pump tests, water quality analysis, and so forth. The Board of Health Administrator at this point is, is likely to recommend that the Board of Health waive their usual fee for, for that work. Typically, four hundred dollars per well is assessed for a fee. But it's, it's, it's looks like the, the Board of Health Administrator will suggest that the Board of Health waive the four hundred dollar fee per well. So that, that's actually an eight hundred dollar savings that can go towards other work.
Yeah, particularly if it just goes back into the general fund. It's kind of moved anyway. It's not like it goes into some separate revolving or enterprise fund. So just a couple of, so, um, any state permitting required for this? Like, there's no, it's not of withdrawals to trigger any kind of E and R, anything like that. Is it just for general withdrawals? Or is it just the local permitting? Does anyone know, or what type of withdrawals are we kind of expecting here? Like, what's, what's the magic?
Just local permitting, Eric. I don't believe we crossed the thresholds for the capacity to trigger a NEPA permitting.
It's like ten thousand gallons per day, twenty thousand gallons, but I can't remember.
Don't remember, but it's, it's, I think it's a fair amount larger than what we're anticipating.
Drinking water is ten thousand gallons per day for a public water supply, I know.
Well, actually, it's twenty-five people for public water supply, I think. And then whatever the Title V adds up to the twenty-five, the twenty-five people, I think. But then there's the, the triggers, you know, the ENF, the EIRs, blah, 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 which are, I'm sure quite, quite rewarding this.
Daryl, Daryl, you got Daryl awake now. Do you want to answer his specific question, Daryl?
The Water Management Act kicks in at one hundred thousand gallons a day.
Yeah, okay, we're not, we're not gonna touch that. Okay.
And just another note, it's not going to be a savings for the town. We're just waiving it because it's town-to-town financial matter. And just to simplify that, it is going to take staff a lot of time to work on this. So it's going to be a bigger expense than a normal well.
It'd actually be a savings for the ARPA pool designated for this project as well, it'll be. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Right.
Okay, is that, is that all the questions you had, Eric?
Yeah, I'm sure I can come up with more, but go ahead. Talk to people who are actually hands appropriately. No, no.
I'll, I'll come, I'll give you another chance. Don't worry, Paul, go ahead.
So as I understood the presentation, the quotation is for like a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And we've already given a hundred, another hundred and twenty-five has been spent, so seventy-five remains. So if you subtract seventy-five from a hundred and thirty-four is sixty thousand. So the ask is for sixty thousand dollars. And from the last discussion we had on this, I, I think we were all pretty clear that we're committed to having these fields be the very best they can. And we're also committed to follow through with the discussion from town meeting, that artificial surf, I guess, or whatever, turf is not the way to go. And therefore irrigation is essentially the only way to go in order to have these fields be available for the recreation use of our children and our residents. So I, I, I think, given the fact that we have these prior votes and prior commitments and the town meeting discussion, we should allocate this, this sixty thousand dollars and move this project forward. That's where I come up.
Okay. Mayor, you finished, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, Marion?
Yeah, I'm also very supportive of this effort. And, you know, I commend the Recreation Commission for, you know, buckling down and getting this done. I have a, a couple of questions regarding the water supply and the testing. You're only planning to pump for four hours, which is not very long. And I don't see any measurement of recovery time. So I'm wondering how you will estimate what, what the actual capacity of these wells is over time. Say, Dave, you probably have these estimates. I know it can't be exact, but how many gallons per minute? For how long do you need from these wells? How will you know whether the results of your test give you adequate water for your needs or not?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. I, I have to go find it in terms of what Jeff, who was the consultant, was, was proposing in terms of the gallons per minute. But I know that within a threshold, we could, one potential option, it would be to build some sort of holding tank or pond or what have you. So we could actually trickle feed. If we didn't get enough flow, we could trickle feed into some sort of intermediary, you know, container, and then, and then irrigate the fields below a certain threshold. It doesn't make sense to do that. But I think we have to get to the point where we actually understand what kind of water flow we have before we start thinking about whether or not it's a no-go altogether over there. And it's just not feasible, whether or not we, you know, again, we could drill one well and have plenty. But until we know exactly how much water we're gonna get, we have an estimate for what we think we need for the fields overall. And then the question is, you know, given, given the, the actual flow from the wells that we drill, then we've got to come up with some sort of design.
Right, and time is a factor. You, you never know, of course, you can't predict how long you'll need to pump, how long you'll need to irrigate it at any one time, but, yeah.
I don't have, I don't have the number handy, but it was, we do have that number. I could go look it up, and I could send it to you if you're interested.
Marion, the other variability is depending on the, the yield of the, the wells and the storage, you know, more or less fields could be irrigated. So there's, there's a few factors that can be considered based on how much is proven out.
Yeah, that makes sense. And one other question, the, the report or the proposal from Talkington and whatever the other guy's name is. They refer to the next steps. So you've done this four-hour test. You know how much water you got in four hours? You don't know the recovery time, but what, what are the next steps? What's the next thing you'll do after this? And how much will it cost?
Assuming that we, we actually know, like, I mean, after we've, after we've drilled and, and done the test to understand the, the, the flow. Yeah, then we need to design a system. Well, it depends. Well, I should say, we have to design a system at that point. Assuming that we have enough water that's going to be produced by the wells. So that means, you know, where, you know, how much power, where the, where the, the, the lines are gonna flow, how much we're gonna irrigate, how much we're gonna have, you know, how many sprinkler heads are gonna go in the ground. So that would be the next step.
And then how you're gonna manage the fields with, with this? Yeah, I, I understand that's down the road, but
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Paul, do you still have your hand up from before, or do you have a new question?
No, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Stephen? Stephen?
Yeah, quick question just about the, the fact that we're asking for another sixty thousand dollars. Do we know, because initially we had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for this entire project. Do we anticipate that, is this just expected and part of that two hundred and fifty thousand? Or are we anticipating that actually the total project will cost more than two hundred and fifty thousand?
I think it was three fifty total.
Yeah, so I was just Oh, yeah, sorry, two fifty was on top of the first hundred, right?
Yeah, so that's, I would like to go through the numbers, too. I'm interrupting a little bit, Stephen. But we, we authorize, we didn't authorize three fifty. We, we targeted three fifty. We authorized a hundred, I think. Is that right, Dave?
Correct.
And, and the other hundred, you spent twenty-five-nine on the, on what you've done to date. Now, that leaves seventy-four thousand over the hundred thousand. So will the seventy, can the sixty thousand come from out of that, or is that in addition to the seventy-four?
In addition, in addition. So, so the hundred thousand that we voted on, or that you voted on originally, will cover the next phase, which is to actually do the, the, the drilling itself.
So we have seventy-four thousand left over from the first hundred.
Correct. Plus an additional sixty.
So the total would be a hundred and sixty. So we would need to authorize an additional sixty tonight, is that right, or sixty-six, whatever?
That's what I asked for. Yep.
Yeah, mainly my concern is just looking at this spreadsheet, you know, it says at the, you know, the bottom line balance of all projects were approved is around nineteen thousand. So I just want to make sure that we aren't already basically just kind of hitting the gas pedal and knowing that we're gonna blow past that.
Yeah, so that's a great question. And I, I had the same question for Jeff, who's, who's a consultant who's working on it, which is like, hey, look, if we, we go over what we originally planned for this phase, do we have enough left over to, to complete the project? And he, he said, there's a lot of unknowns at this point. First, obviously, we have to figure out like whether or not we have water there in the first place. But he said, assuming that we're able to hit water, then, he said, you, you should have enough, you will have enough left over to, to design something. Now, to Jeremy's point, is it gonna be every field? Maybe not. Maybe we have to scale back the, the initial phase. But we'll, we'll end up having, you know, a, enough to be able to irrigate a, a significant portion of Laurel.
Is that okay, Stephen?
Yep, that's good.
We would need to vote tonight, if I'm understanding correctly, to authorize an additional sixty. So you would have then have authorized a hundred and sixty in total. Is that correct, eh?
Correct.
And, and then you would have already spent, you know, just under thirty, and you would use the remaining a hundred and thirty to get to the next step where you'll then know what kind of system you have to design.
Yep, exactly.
So we'll make a motion in a minute. But Daryl, you wanna add some insights here?
Yeah, I just had a question. Since, since there seems to be quite the heightened interest about water, groundwater resources in town. Putting in these wells might be a great opportunity for the town to collect data about what's going on with groundwater. And the time to plan for that is before the wells get put in. Because what kind of monitoring devices you might use to track what the water levels are depends the effectiveness and the ease of use and avoiding pitfalls depends on how you set up the borehole and the pipe and the pump placement and wires run down to the pump, that sort of thing. So if that's of interest to the town, to set up the monitoring, there are a few types. There are pressure transducers. There's the sonic, you know, wells. There's probably a laser thing, but I haven't really seen that. But it seems like I, I would believe that's a possibility. And there are water probes and airline devices. So choosing which one is gonna be, might be used. I'm just saying now is the time to figure that out and plan for it, because trying, I've been involved with trying to retrofit. It's very difficult.
So do you recommend that maybe Mark Orm could at least give them some insights?
No, I think it should be under the project.
No, I know, but I mean, if they want to get additional information, you think they have enough resources?
I would hope. It sounds like this is pretty costly, so I'm assuming that they have well experts. We can make Mark available to help, but I think this is a different, we don't have a lot of monitoring of the private wells in town. So we don't have, we don't have the board.
I didn't mean doing any work. I meant just in terms of ideas.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't deal with that at this level. I've seen it for other big systems like this.
Okay.
We can speak with the hydrogeologist that's employed by Geosphere, the, the consultant, so.
Yeah, that sounds more reasonable.
All right, Eric and then Sean.
You know, take Sean first. I'm gonna make more of a global question about the ARPA, the specific scope.
Sean?
In response to Daryl's question or comment, some of which she's referring to will be in the phase just after this. Because these are, the casings will be in, the wells will be in, they will be tested. And there is actually more testing that the hydrogeologist included other than the, the four-hour test that, that was, you know, mandated by the Board of Health, as any well is. So there was, there was different monitoring and testing that the, that, that's already in the plan and the scope for the well driller. And, but the pumps and the electrical and everything will come after this. The testing of the drawdown of the wells will happen while the rigs are there and that company. But after that, the install of the pumps and everything else is, is the, the very next phase, because it can't be designed till we know the, the flow and the, the yield. That's all.
Okay. Did you want to supplement that, Daryl? You're finished?
Uh, okay, so I, I just have, I want to point out one other thing. I'm also talking about monitoring that goes in and stays in place. And you can attach data loggers, and it can be relayed to somewhere that's collecting the data remotely and evaluated. So, great. And that sounds great, Sean. Thanks for the other information.
Okay.
We can get to you, we can work with Ray and get to you sort of an outline of what, what his suggestions are in terms of monitoring. And then you can, you give any feedback. If we, we need to adjust it, we can, we can talk through.
Sounds good. Eric?
Yeah, just a comment that I'm, I'm actually glad to see this project is progressing, impressing along a reasonable schedule of costs, as was initially proposed. And, you know, I hope it gets some to its point there. So a little global point of concern about the ARPA funding is that there was even recent talk in Congress about rescinding some of these funds, and we have a certain deadline for expending them. At some point in the next, like, I don't know, two to four select board meetings, it'd be nice to get a little summary of the, of the ARPA projects that we authorized, where they stand in, in spending the money. You know me, I mean, I work, I work out of city, and I get that when you get a certain capital appropriation, you try to maximize that. But, you know, I'm still, wanna see if, you know, make sure we're on track with the spending of a lot of our authorized projects. And if not, you know, that we do utilize these funds and don't let them slip away, for unsimple. And, you know, my, my final mantra is to, you know, any excess funds to utilize toward already approved capital expenditure approved by town meeting, as that's more the intent of the town. And I don't see myself supporting an additional pet project that was not already approved on the first vote. That's all.
Yeah, there was a summary in our packet of where we stand on all the expenditures, but we could just add it to the, the August tenth meeting to
Was it the drawdown? Was it actually on the, on, show the drawdown?
Yeah, it showed, it showed then today.
It does show the drawdown. Of the one point two million authorized or, or provided to the town of Sherburne, actual spend is about a third, so about four hundred thousand, a little over four hundred thousand's actually been expended.
I don't have, I can, I don't, whatever, I just can't find it. That's probably
We can set it up here separately, but it's in the packet, and would be happy to come back. And in addition to the finances, also have a report on the projects and their status.
I think that's worth doing, I think, Jeremy. I, I have, I can share my screen, because I have that file open, but I don't think it's worth it. Let's do that.
It's probably not consistent with the agenda item. I didn't want to have too much discussion about it, because then that is a scope. I get that.
Yep. So I think your point is very well taken, though, Eric, so we can sort of rethink it and look at where they stand. So, um, does someone want to make a motion to authorize the sixty thousand additional? Okay. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, let you know how it goes.
Try the, the lacrosse backboard. I haven't won. It's on my list, though. Don't worry.
Perfect.
All right. That's a good one. So now, Heidi, you want to describe the, I think we talked about a little bit before, the intermunicipal agreement?
Yes, so the last meeting, it was just brought up, questioning the timing and looking into it. And a decision was made to have a letter drafted that we would send over to Don Fattori and just inquire as to when do they need the funds and what was involved before we decide to pursue anything further. So in the packet was a draft letter that Jeff and I put together, and I was gonna see So in the packet was a draft letter on that Jeff and I put together, and I was gonna see if. You approve it, if the board has any comments or changes they'd like to make.
That's the one I already signed, I signed it already, didn't I?
Yeah.
I haven't nailed it, because I want to make sure we get the approval.
All right. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Eric?
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Well.
Hi.
I am I as well, I didn't want to have to re-sign a new one anyway, so that's good, Heidi.
Thank you.
Do what Don says.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're on to appointments. Diane or Jeremy, which of the two are you going to lead this, the first is Agricultural Commission, can we, um. I I'd like to have the the new appointments have a chance to speak if they're here.
Renee Roberts is here tonight.
I saw her name, but so shall we just, why don't we just, we're not, we don't have that long agenda, let's just go through each one and vote.
Okay.
Agricultural Commission is Mark Williams, for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty six, is Mark here? I don't see him.
No, he's not here.
So, uh, does someone want to make a motion to authorize Mark Williams to a term on the Agricultural Commission? Second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
I am I as well, and the next one is the Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee, which is Rennie Roberts, if I'm pronouncing it rightly. Would you like to, you've been very patient, Rennie, so uh, like to introduce yourself and explain your, we're really happy that you're volunteering to help with this.
Well, it, I was, I was asked if I would do it, and. The main criteria seems to be to be in town a lot and no value discretion. And I I think I qualify on both those counts, so I'm happy to help if that's what what needs doing.
Great. Second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Why am I as well, thank you again, Rennie.
You're welcome.
ZBA, we already know Zach, I don't think he's here, and I don't see Todd here, is he here?
No, Todd's not here either tonight, I don't see him.
I'm of approval for both of them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay, Eric?
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well, and.
Asking a question about that?
Yeah.
How long is Ron Stefanic on the ZBA, and was that a while?
I think so, I don't know how long, though, but I.
Impressive that he's been on that long, I'd like to.
I think Jeanie could probably answer that question.
I think he was on for fifteen years.
Yeah.
I'd like send him like a letter or something, I don't know, I mean, that's pretty good, I mean.
Honor that.
But.
That's a long term thankless job, like most things, but I mean, that one particular, I mean.
I think he was ready.
Yeah. And I don't blame him, but I guess it would like to thank him somehow.
I do, can I just make a a general comment? I feel like, um, the, before I was on the board, there was talk about with these uh, appointments to sort of have more. Kind of background and discussion on them, I mean, I do, I just generally agree, it would be nice to have a little bit more background on. Some of these people, I feel like it used to be that when there were appointments and things that at at minimum, there would be like a resume or something, I know. When I first, uh, when I first volunteered for something, I submitted my resume for um, for consideration, and I just. You know, uh, especially for things like the ZBA, that's a pretty important um, committee, and I do understand that. Um, that that some of the committee members have been trying to get off, but. Um, you know, I I just, I just feel like it would be nice to have more background uh, information about um, the the new appointees.
Well, I'd like to clarify, the concern before was that there wasn't, it was almost like self-selecting, or it was almost like there wasn't appropriate advertisement. As long as he's had the thirty days advertisements, and one thing we should be notified is was there, is there, is it contested? So that that was a, that was a real thing, there's the, is the one, make sure that's reasonably well-vetted, that has appropriately advertised, because we felt things were like. Open and close real quick, and, you know, um, certain committees might self-select or whatever that was. And that, um, it goes through the select board, and that to actually encourage contesting, like, best by knowledge, none of these are contested. Because that's really where the discussion comes in, and that's where like, the resumes more come in and stuff like that, you know what I mean? If it's only applicant, I mean, it'd be nice to see a resume, but I don't know. I mean, unless we think there's a conflict, do you know what I mean, or someone's just grossly unqualified was a conflict, I think that's maybe. With a threshold, but the the whole point of the concern we had a few years ago was to get more people to advertise, and then to us to have the select board assess. If there's more than one applicant for one position, something like that, I don't know if anyone else wants to remember that, or.
No, that's exactly accurate, the only thing I would say is, I mean, we're also in the unfortunate situation, and we have way more openings than volunteers, so. We're not exactly turning people away, I think it's hard to get for, you know, what, one of the things that will, Jeremy and Diane have been working on is. We need to um, look at all the boards and committees that we have, and look at where we have vacancies also, because I think.
Actually, I'd like, if I could say something, Jeff, I looked the other day, and believe it or not, there aren't many vacancies on on our boards and committees. We've, we've done a really good job of filling them up. And I have a few more new people that have been approaching me over the last week or two for other.
One more thing is specific to the ZBA, while I agree it's a crucial committee, and you want someone really qualified. They do have the feature of having that associate board member, so you almost have a board member in training program sort of there, they don't. I don't think they vote uh, in the in the session, so, um, so Zach's um, being appointed, but he's been the associate member for a while.
Yes.
So, that's what that's in, Marion, did you want to weigh in on the volunteers?
Uh, yeah, I would only add that, uh, I I personally find it really uh. Helpful to see a resume or have some background information on people, just because. You know, it's a small town, and you, it tells you something about the person, and makes it. You know, it's, it's interesting to know who it is that's volunteering, and often it's, they're very impressive in their background. And, uh, you know, then we know uh, who to um, call on. Something else, I know, I mean, really, it's good just to know who's there and. What they have to contribute, which may be far beyond what what they write in that little page that they send in.
That's true.
So one of the reasons why people don't do that. Uh, just speaking as a town council. These are basically public records, and sometimes you have a lot of stuff in a resume that. It's one thing you you show in confidence to a private employer, it's another thing to have it. Published in the in the newspaper, everybody reading about how many kids you have. Do you like to go dog walking, all that kind of stuff, I mean, but there's personal privacy issues. And so you find people not wanting to submit full resumes. Then they get these truncated versions that they they just say where they went to school, what their job is. Um, it's, it's very hard to police.
No.
It's always good to know people, but you'd be surprised how much you can learn from people by just Googling, so if you really wanted to know a lot about somebody. You Google them. You may find out more than you want to know.
Well, what I actually, to your point, uh, which is a good point, Paul, what I had in mind was not personal information at all. But just, yeah, where they went to school, what they do for a living, you know, even just that is interesting to know.
So what we've done in other communities is we have an application form. That the town prepares, and it has, you know, so a number of questions. And it asks for the basic information, but I I I know one town asked, you know, have you ever attended a town meeting, and you'd be surprised, the number of people. Uh, who apply have never attended a town meeting. And nobody's ever held that against anybody, but it's, 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 some communities think that's useful information, so you. If you want to get information, you can do an application form, which tells the applicant what you need to know. And in that list of things asked for, I would exclude things like, you know, social security numbers and. And uh, all kinds of details about, you know, gee, they were, they were fired from their last job, and they're unemployed now. Looking for work, I mean, you don't, what does that got to do with being a volunteer uh, for the town, I mean?
All right. So, um. Before Jackie, I think is going to talk to us about election workers, Jeanie, do you want to uh, elaborate on something?
I I just wanted to say that as far as the zoning board of appeals, we went for a long time without an associate member. And then last April, we, this past April, we cut sack, and this is the first time we've had. Four, three voting members and at least one associate in probably five or six years. So, um, and the board uh, was told about, um. Was told about uh, Todd and sent a resume of what he, what he does, and. The board was pretty impressed, so I think that's why they asked for him to be appointed, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Jackie, where did you go, there you are.
I'm not here, thank you, so this is pretty straightforward, um, it's just required that the select board every year. Vote, um, on the current list of election workers. Um, I did put it in the packet, but just to let you know, as per the master of law requirement. I did reach out to the chairs of the Republican and Democratic Town Committees. Beginning of April, and they had until June first to get me a list of eight, at least eight names, and. Um, I did not receive any, so this is basically all the current list that that uh, the people that we've been using for the last few years.
Okay.
You guys please approve them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric?
Oh, I.
Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Oh.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Okay, we're down to consent agenda, as I've already mentioned several times, I had our next meetings, is there any uh? Comment or motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move a problem.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Oh.
Hi.
I am I as well, excellent. Any select board reports that people want to make? I haven't been doing much, I'm not doing enough. Or we've been together too much, one or the other, I don't know which. How about Jeremy, um, you, you were traveling, I know, so I'm not sure if you have a town administrator report for this week, anyway?
I actually, I have a few items to update this, the board on.
Right.
Regarding, um, the cell phone towers, so the, particularly the one uh, on Brush Hill on and Hunting Lane. Uh, we've been able to do with some additional research and actually discovered uh, some special legislation that was filed in nineteen ninety two. That actually clears the hurdle of the chapter ninety seven disposition, so, um, the town council has has opined that. Um, we do not need to uh, seek special legislation. Uh, or go through the chapter ninety seven process to renew the lease or to put out a new RFP for the lease. Um, and they have uh, helped draft an RFP to do that. So. It is our intent that, um, in the near future, we would be issuing that RFP to to seek another leasing for another twenty year term. For the Brush Hill um, cell phone tower. The term of that lease ends in two thousand twenty four, um, in October, so. Uh, we would be able to get the RFP out in ample time to have it considered, and uh, you know, before the terms of that lease uh, come due. Um, and actually, we've noticed that that, that all the equipment that's in the 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 current shed and the tower. Um, has been removed, so there there may not actually be, um, even though we're getting rent, we're getting, um, you know, the monthly rent. That we currently really receive through the lease agreement, they not, I may not actually be using that currently. And it's probably due to the uncertainty of, uh, you know, what's going to happen after the term of the lease ends, you know, within the year, so. Um, just.
Is there a technology aspect too with five G, I mean, I I don't know whether, I'd be surprised if we get people bidding for a twenty year term, I guess, myself.
We'll see, I mean, there's interest, we've been receiving letters to renew uh, the term, which we we don't have the authority to do, we need to. Either issue a new RFP and bid it again for another twenty year term, or up to a twenty year term. Uh, but there's been interest, so we we may be surprised, there might be just the uncertainty of of the term. Um, not knowing if the current vendor would get a renewed term and not wanting to invest um, with that short term. But hopefully, we do.
Within the sheds, and it would, do they still have standby power and all the other?
They do, it's all outfitted, so it's all ready to go.
Okay.
We currently receive about five thousand dollars a month from that cell phone tower, so.
Okay.
It's a great revenue stream, we hope to continue.
Yeah.
Also, wanted to let the board know, we did enter into a a natural gas supply contract similar to what we did for the electric supply. Uh, the the pricing was favorable, so we went with a twenty four month term. Um, that should save the community about six thousand dollars per year in natural gas costs, based on the current costs, and it will help us. Uh, have a predictable rate for the next two years. Uh, an update on the fire station solar project, which was actually one of your ARPA projects. There's been a lengthy discussion between power options, which is the town's uh, sustainability uh, energy consultant. And Select Energy, who's the contractor that would be putting in the the solar panels. They've been doing some lengthy negotiations on the standard contract to be used. Uh, dragged out for several months, finally, they've come to terms. So, we hope to enter into that contract with Select to do the installation shortly. A structural analysis was prepared, um, so that the building can support it, is an inert connection approval with EverSource Electric. Uh, and hopefully, uh, we we will see the construction and installation of those panels um, in September. Uh, just a reminder there that the proposed solar panels would generate about fifty percent of the electric demand for the fire station. Had a simple payback of five and a half years, a pretty quick payback, and over the course of twenty years, it saves Sherburne a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, but we're anxious to get that project going, and finally have the the contract hurdle um, cleared.
No, that's great, that's a big savings, and is it the same net, maybe net metering agreement with EverSource then, but with a DPW garage too, or they all on the same net metering agreement?
It it would be on a, well, a separate agreement for that site. Um, but we would own these panels, these are not leased panels, the ARPA would purchase these panels. As opposed to public works panels or or a lease arrangement, so a little difference, but um, the metering is similar.
Okay.
I think Jeff, you know this, but just wanted to relate to the board that we've entered into a contract with David Fixler Architecture Planning and Restoration. To do the feasibility study of outfitting the basement of the library to house the Sherburne Historic Society. For that feasibility study should be completed, a draft should be completed by mid to late August. And finalized in in early September, and likely, there there'll be a presentation that we could have uh, before the board to to hear the results of that study. That study will prove out what sort of costs are associated, what needs to be done to outfit it to to the historic missions.
Yeah, one of the things I think I've, I've mentioned this before, I know I have to use Jeremy into the slide board, is I. We won't be complete, I don't think, but I would love to have with our three hundred fiftieth anniversary, have the museum being. Um, pretty far along in terms of its new house and new uh, operating venue, because I think that would be a. Even if this project's not complete yet, i- i- I think it's important for the three hundred fiftieth to recognize. As part of that his historic celebration.
Yeah, so I think we should know a lot more in the coming weeks, as far as what needs to go.
Chris was excited, I I know he was.
Um, the MWRA has approved the eight M permit for the Sudbury Aqueduct Recreation Trail. That allows public access for the the full length of the trail. Uh, that runs about two miles from the Framingham border, um, south of Kendall Avenue, eastward towards Everett Street. So, um, that agreement's in place, uh, it also allows the town to build a small pedestrian bridge over sort of a canal near. Thirty eight Meadowbrook Road, the Sherburne Forest and Trails Association is is planning to build that at some point, so. That agreement's in place, and, you know, the the public can enjoy that access now, if they haven't already.
Now, you were a big proponent of that, Marion, were you, you were.
Put together the applications, yes.
Case and then got it through and, you know, negotiated with MWRA. Yeah, I put together the application and got it through and, you know, negotiated with MWRA, basically was my baby there for a while, but now it's the town's baby.
I know, but it's it's always good to know.
But another, another piece of that was that. We we what we have to. We're trying to get the Aqueduct Trail truly accessible along as much of its length as is practicable. That which ideally would include crossing the golf course, but we we actually crossed the golf course with the golf course manager. And the the MAPC rep for regional trails and realized that we don't want it to cross the golf course.
Yeah.
So we have a a bypass planned through the developments on Coolidge Street. That would hook up to Peters Hill Trails and then down to the athletic fields and back up to the Aqueduct.
Yep. All right.
Well, two more. Yeah, that's great. Just wanted to let everybody know that the Sherburnes received a community planning early action grant of thirty thousand dollars. For outreach and education towards adopting a three A district, you know, the so-called MBTA zoning. You know, put together this application and we've heard favorable news that we will be awarded that. In the application, it states Sherburne will prepare a campaign that focuses on housing needs in Sherburne in the region with an emphasis on the goals. Of Sherburne's two thousand twenty-two Housing Production Plan, housing needs of the region and the town's draft three A district zoning bylaw and map, so. Will be utilizing those funds over the course of the next year to to carry forward with that. And in case folks haven't noticed, on Farm Road, EverSource has begun. The the replacement of utility poles and the electrical service, you know, the electrical distribution service wiring that we had noted. A little while back, that was going to help provide some more redundancy and. You know, some strength to the electrical distribution system from the Dover Town Line down Farm Road to South Main Street, so. They have begun that work. If you drive Farm Road, you'll see the the new poles being set beside the existing poles and. They'll continue on with that and and move the wires over to new poles and. Hopefully that helps with. Minimizing future power outages.
Okay, for someone that has power joined that cold snap, because I lived on the south side of town, I. I couldn't believe we had a type of vulnerability. Just one pole went down, half the town was out. That was unbelievable, so I'm. Great that that progressed.
Oh, I've watched them. I've driven by and seen their work. We we didn't know we were getting Whitney Street repo lost at the same time, but we had a little incident over there that. The truck took out a number of poles with one cable pole.
So we do actually still plan to meet with EverSource and. And Verizon to to further. Refine the the this, the process of when a pole goes out or gets knocked down and who's who does what and when. So the chief, the fire chief, chief ward has been scheduling a meeting that will be coming up shortly.
Anything else?
That's it. Thanks, Jeff.
I'm going to do one other public service announcement. We have a meeting before then, but Diane's arranged the town employee luncheon. If you haven't responded yet, it's on the fourteenth. It's a Monday, the fourteenth of August, at twelve thirty PM is the town employee luncheon, so. Put that in your calendars if you can.
Could I mention one one other thing that I forgot?
Sure, go ahead.
I. You all saw that the Attorney General. Basically ratified all of the articles that we both, that we voted in favor of at the last town meeting. With the exception of the the solar bylaw and that will be discussed. At Planning Board next Tuesday. But zoning board is starting the hearings on the Farm Road forty B project on the same night. So I'm hoping someone will will have some presence on on Planning Board. To hear what their plans are to with solar bylaw. Or do we just wait and see what the Attorney General says and then react?
No, I think we're okay. We can talk about it. I we met with Gino. We had a discussion today. Jeremy and I met with Gino today. Chris Owen wasn't available.
Marion, that it was not rejected, this postponed their opinion, just so the audience knows.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so we don't yet know what their opinion is, so, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was on somebody's radar screen.
So what what I see your hand, Paul. Heather White's going to kind of look at it, because she said, well, the way the Attorney General will likely do it is they. Will approve it with conditions. Is that the word they use? I forget the words. I think conditions or qualifications. I forget the words she used, but.
I think with caution.
Caution, it's caution. That's the right word, yeah, cautions. So they typically would approve it with cautions, which. You know, doesn't necessarily mean it's not approved, but it's sort of like a. Not really a red flag, but a yellow flag, I guess, of some kind. So Heather's going to be looking at it. And I think Gino or Jeremy was going to send it to her. Gino's good at a million things, but retiring isn't one of them. Go ahead, Paul, I'm sorry.
I was going to move to a jerk.
Ah, all right, just because you want to watch Argentina play soccer, I'm pretty sure. Started at eight. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Eric.
And I.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
I am I as well. Paul, I forgot you made the motion, Paul. So.
For my own motion, yes.
Yes, we will accept that. So thank you, everyone. And good night, Mark.
Good night.